Illesa Toen-Guaran is back in session. We're back on second reading. We're now on Bill Number 223. Senator San Augustine, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I motion that we move to recess and convene as Committee of the Whole to entertain Bills 332. There's three bills, 332, 357, and 359. But the order that we would recognize the bills would be 357 first, then 359, and 332. And the only reason why the order is in that form is because we're communicating with the panel for 332. They'll be here shortly after we're done with the GPA bills. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for correcting my reading of the number. So that is correct. All right, so we're going to recess into the Committee of the Whole. We're hereby recessed.
The Committee of the Whole is called to order. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in shared session, Google Drive, folder labeled 12.13.22. Committee of the Whole, proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, 36glsession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. Rules of engagement, three rounds for discussion. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel, with each senator allotted five minutes for question, not including responses. Time to speak may be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who used the member's time on a question, used all the member's time on that question, and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used. Under the rules, standing rule, Section 1.02d3. At the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused. Third round is for amendments or comments speaking on the bill. After we complete discussion of the bill, I will allow the sponsors to close, and I will adjourn motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, followed by motion derived from the Committee of the Whole, at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. Thank you. We will now, we will be discussing, we will be now on Bill 357-36COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing, an act to appropriate $26,308,1,000 from the fiscal year 2022 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in public law 36-54, as amended, to the Guam Power Authority for a five-month extension to the Program Azuda Para Itautauta Energy Credit Program relative to providing customers with another $500 credit towards their account. I now call upon the panel guests and for the Sarn arms to swear them in and for their introduction. Sarn arms?
Under penalty of perjury, DoA affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Mr. Chair, on the road. Thank you. May proceed.
Thank you. As the panel, beginning with my far left, please introduce yourself, and then we go down the panel. Mr. Guerill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Steve Guerill, Director of Office of Financial Budget.
Good afternoon, Lester Carlson, BBMR.
Half Day, Tracy Lim-Tiaco, Acting General Manager, Guam Power Authority.
John Kim, Guam Power Authority CFO.
Graham Botha, Guam Power Authority, Legal Counsel.
Good afternoon, Paz Perez, Guam Power Authority Assistant CFO.
Thank you, panel, for joining us today. I now call on to the author of the Bill Number 357-36, Speaker Trelawney. Please give your opening statement on your bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel members, sorry, who are here today and here promptly. Very much appreciate that. The Bill Number 357-36, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriations and Housing, is an act to appropriate $26,381,000 from fiscal year 2022 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in public law 36-54, as amended, to the Guam Power Authority for a five-month extension to the Program Azuda Para Itautauta Energy Credit Program relative to providing customers with another $500 credit towards their account. This bill was introduced on November 10, 2022, and will provide $100 monthly energy credits for five months, starting December 2022 through April 2023, for GPA residential customers to give them some continued relief from the increases in power rates and the increased cost of living in general. I don't think I need to point out to my colleagues that this is really one of the number-one issues that we hear from constituents if we're out in public, in our offices, wherever we go, is that the cost of living is really getting very difficult for them, and power bills in particular, they are very worried about, and worried about their ability to continue to pay those bills. So the bill will provide the additional $26.3 million to GPA, and will continue the program that was created in public law 36-54 on July 27. As we know, that program ended in November, so this bill, we should pass very promptly in order so that this credit can be extended for the month of December and going forward. The bill proposes to use FY22 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted revenue levels of the FY22 Budget Act. The government collected $103.5 million more in general funds than what was adopted in FY22 Budget Act, according to the September 2022 Consolidated Revenue and Expenditure Report. That CRER also subtracted all other FY22 and FY2023 general fund appropriations from the $103.5 million excess revenues, still leaving an unobligated general fund revenue amount of $47.5 million for FY2022. The unobligated $47.5 million from FY2022 should be more than enough for the $26.3 million appropriation in this bill for the energy credit program. BBMR and DOA testified during the public hearing and provided written testimony in support of the bill and recommended language for the funding source that matches what is written, what was written in the introduced version of Bill 357-36 and continues in the amended version. The bill gives specific funding source that is proven and immediately available for the appropriation to GPA, and uses the language that has been used in our current FY2023 budget, which has been successfully implemented and made available to agencies prior to the FY2022 audit. BBMR during our session last month in the Committee of the Whole verified that the appropriations in the FY23 budget law that used this same funding source and the language, those were already made available to the agencies that were appropriated those funds. This bill and the appropriation language in the bill are responsible and a transparent means of providing funding for the appropriation and a relief to these ratepayers. I want to thank the Chairman on Appropriations for reporting the bill out of his committee and having the hearing promptly, and I would like to make a motion, oh, I guess I do it on the next round, sorry. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the panel again.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We'll begin now the rounds of questions, and we'll begin with Senator Telo Tadegui. You have any questions, ma'am, to the panel at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, and good afternoon to the panel. Thank you for being here. You know, we were in the Committee of the Whole not too long ago, discussing, you know, what amounts are available out there, and talking about also our previous debts or those that we anticipate may happen. And I think it was Lester where you mentioned something that the fuel tax credit was something that was doable, but then you also mentioned that this bill for the GPA credit may be an issue. I don't know if you said an issue, or if you said something to the fact that there might be considering all the bills that we have, $47,000, but we have other obligations, we have the Medicaid scenario that we may have to pay, we have the, what is the other one? The federal government questionable costs that are still up in the air. I don't know about health insurance, if there's any concerns on having to pay any health insurance. We definitely lost money in the Section 30, what was anticipated by about $4 million, if I'm not mistaken. That was all something that we had to incur. So considering everything that's foreseeable or even potential, what is your opinion about being able to fund this bill?
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. For the record, I did not have any objections. What I said previously was the fuel tax relief bill and this bill can certainly be accommodated, and Mr. Byrne also confirmed that. I believe you were the one asking the questions about Medicaid. You were the one that was asking about question cost.
Right, the shortfalls.
Yes, that wasn't me. I'm here to support the bill, as the speaker mentioned, the written testimony that Mr. Byrne read into the record at the public hearing, supported the bill, supports the fund source.
Okay, Mr. Carlson, on November 30, 2022, when we were in the Committee of the Whole with Mr. Burns, he mentions to us that the Medicaid shortfall, if it happens, will be about $21 million. He also mentioned that the shortfall for the special funds is trailing in at about $8 million for the FY22. Now, this is FY22. Then it was mentioned earlier that $4 million, $4 million as well is short with the Section 30 money.
Senator, the Section 30 has nothing to do with '22 excess revenue.
But we're short.
No, ma'am, that's for '23. So if you look at the CRER for October, we are still $7.5 million better after we took out the shortfall in its entirety for Section 30. So we're good. Section 30 has no bearing whatsoever in the fund source that is being discussed today.
So we can assume that that shortfall of $4 million will be covered in 2023 budget, then, or at least whatever excess revenue in 2023, like you mentioned? Okay, so it's not going to have any bearing in the 2022 budget. But what about the question costs? You know, I mentioned already Medicaid, and if anything happens, it's $21 million, then of course the shortfall of $8 million for FY22. What about the question cost? What is the status on that from the federal government?
I'm not privy to that information. All I know is what Mr. Byrne told you, that the initial amount has gone down, and he expects further reductions as time goes on, but the obligation, if there is one, has not been officially set yet.
My question is to GPA. At the end of this, the first bill that gave us the tax, or not the tax, sorry, the power credit for five months, did we have enough to fulfill that obligation in the funding that we provided for GPA?
Thank you for that question, Senator. Yes, we did. However, in the beginning, in July, we had a positive balance. In October and November, we had a negative balance, so we actually exceeded the $5.276 plus that was received. So we used proceeds from the previous three months. So in total, after we did the accounting, we have approximately 70,000, excuse me, $70,900 remaining. And for that $70,900, our CFO is sending a letter to DOA to ask them to determine what status the $70,900 will have, and also to submit the accounting per BBMR's request.
Right, okay. So do you think, moving forward, that this credit would probably be a little bit less than $70,000? Is that the amount that's in the bill?
Yeah. The trend seems to be that we will probably have more accounts requesting for the credit than the appropriation available. So we will probably have to have some folks on the waiting list. Just for numbers' sake, for instance, in October, we, the deficit was $5,200, and so that was taken, the $5,200 was taken from the unused credits from the prior month. In November, we took $9,600 from the prior month. And then at the final billing period in November, shortly thereafter, we cut off any additional issuances of the credits, leaving us with the $70,900. So to answer your question, we do anticipate that we will use all of the credits coming this round, if not more, or all of the credits.
If not more?
We would hope that we would have more to, you know, to have the ratepayers available, but this appropriation is very welcomed.
It's welcome, but is it enough?
Yes.
It will be enough for the next five months on these tax credit, based on your knowledge?
Based on the last five months, yes. If DOA allows us to proceed as we have before, where if there was any unused credits from previous months, we can use it if needed for, you know, the entire five-month period.
And do you read this legislation, or GPA reads this legislation, as just carrying over what the first bill, the original bill, by including certain other one-meter condominiums and as such? It's going to be the same exact thing. Do you read this legislation to copy the same bill that was done last time?
That's correct. So if we have any master meters, we do have a process now, just like the law has, have provided, the original law and also this law, whereby we do our investigation, we receive a notarized statement of the meters, we keep that record for audit purposes and also to turn over to DOA.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Trelawney, do you have any questions?
No question, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to applaud the Director of Budget, the $7 million lapse. So I don't think there's going to be any problem in financing this particular bill, and just like what GPA had mentioned, she had mentioned that we're probably good with this bill to place on the consumer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Adda, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to thank the panel for being here today. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions, ma'am?
I wanted to ask GPA, how do you see the trend? I mean, obviously, it's a little difficult to predict, but where are things going with regards to power? Because, I mean, we're looking at over $50 million already if this bill is included, and certainly I think we can all, we've all benefited from the credit, but, you know, the train ride's going to end at some point, and we'd like to see where GPA is going. Because I've already getting people, before I even get my own power bill, who are commenting that they don't have the $100 credit this month. And we did say yes when the election's over and the money starts drying up, and that's where we're going to be. So what are you seeing so far with regards to what the price of the power bill will be for our residents? Because that's a lot of things people are talking about, the increase, even with the subsidy that they're experiencing.
Yeah, thank you, Senator Brown. I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to our CFO for the financial details. But you're absolutely correct with your concern. We're very concerned with the ratepayers, and of course, for the ratepayers and for the authority. Fuel prices have been so volatile in, over the last year-plus, we've never seen this type of volatility before. I think when we had the public hearing, we cited the November fuel prices at about $141 a barrel. Today, we believe it's approximately, let's see, $105. But those prices do not include any of the fees that are incurred, so those are just market prices. So we do have certain fees. We, as I had mentioned in our testimony before, we've really been very aggressive with our conservation messaging, energy-saving tips. We still have a lot of subscribers for our Energy Sense rebate program. And as far as fuel goes, we are, we continue to advance monies that were saved for operating costs and other things toward the LEAC. I can have the CFO explain a little bit more about fuel prices, if you would like to hear that.
I think it'd be good for our awareness and for the public as well, just to what to anticipate, because certainly, I mean, trust me, I'm sure everyone will appreciate the, even though it is, some may say, well, it's a $100 credit to my several hundred-dollar power bill, but what it ends, and it will, I mean, I don't think overall, Guam, we're not going to be able to sustain continued funding, because there's other demands in the government that are going to come knocking on our door.
Yeah, we agree.
But, you know, it's like, are we going to have a smoother landing, you know, when this expires in five months?
Before I turn it over to John Kim, our CFO, our customers are having a harder time paying, and we see that in the timeliness of payments, we see that in the rising number of requests for payment plans. So we continue to work with our customers daily, sometimes multiple times during the week, and it's a very difficult position when we're speaking with customers who really have a hard time making ends meet. We don't want to, as you had mentioned, kick the can down the road, so it becomes very, very difficult, and we're constantly trying to find ways to help them conserve, to reduce their power bill. It's very sad in many situations. So we're doing the best that we can on the GPA side to contain our costs and make sure that our costs are in line. However, we're very concerned about the ratepayers.
And you're also seeing that now with the subsidy over the last few months, you're still seeing that there are, you have a higher number, what percentage would you save your customer base is having difficulty addressing their monthly payment of their power bill?
I don't have that information with you. I wouldn't want to quote, but I can get that information and circle back to you.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to know.
Okay.
But okay, certainly.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to John Kim.
Oh, yes. In terms of diesel fuels, previously it's been high, but recently the trend has been going down. So that would be, the PUC will be looking at that in January with their petition. Currently, we, the board petitioned to maintain that same LEAC rate, but we said by January, we should see more better trend, then the PUC could make a better decision. then the PUC could make a better decision at that time. But overall, the trend is, on the diesel price, it's been going down. But the price between the Brent price and the diesel price, there's a big, they call it cracking spread. Because currently, the diesel supply in the world is short, partly due to the Ukraine war and most, also, the, due to the Ukraine war, what happened in the Europe side, they're converting, they're burning more diesel fuel for their generation rather than natural gas. So that's why there's a big crack spread between the Brent price and the diesel price. Historically, he's been ranging about $8 to $10 on the spread. However, recently, it's more close to $50 spread. But that's really due to the war. We're hoping, as we have, if able to produce more diesels, the crack spread would be smaller. But we'll probably know better as time goes by.
How about now with your partnership with your solar plant now? How is that, I mean, would it even be higher if you didn't have that partnership at this point? How much is that offsetting what you otherwise would be purchasing more fuel with?
Yes, currently, we, the new Keiko Power Plant, 60 megawatts, price we buy for kilowatt-hours is about 8.5 cents. Our LEAC rate is close to 31 cents. So there's a big difference. As for monthly savings, I'd come back on that.
We'll come back with that information for you.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'll wait for the next round. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Sheldon, do you have any questions for the panel? Senator Perez?
I think many of the questions were asked already. I think maybe perhaps, if I can tag on to my colleagues' questions regarding the plan of action, because, you know, I know the money is limited, right? And I guess, how soon can we find alternatives to kind of mitigate the increasing cost of power? If the GPA can provide a response to that? Is there any plan in place?
We have our long-term plans to mitigate the cost of power, which includes, of course, adding additional utility-scale solar farms. And I believe this body is considering the virtual power plant program and other programs under our clean energy plan. However, the immediate relief would really be based on oil prices right now reducing. So we are maximizing the energy that we purchase from both the Dundan Solar Farm and the Mengilau Solar Farm, as well as the energy we purchase from our NEM customers, the customers who have existing rooftop solar. Unfortunately, when we purchase those, the NEM energy, that is at the same rate that we sell energy. So there's no savings there. The savings really do come from the utility-scale solar plants. We are looking at, although it's not immediate term, we're looking at funding sources to add more energy storage batteries to be able to store excess solar energy that does come in during the day. So while it may be minimal on some days and considerable on others, we're hoping to use that excess solar energy that's stored to shave the peak times, which, as you've heard GM Beneventi say, that's the most expensive time when we have to have all the generating units on.
Okay, great. Thank you for that response.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, the other thing was, so the source of oil that you purchase. I remember there was a discussion in another committee of the whole where GWA was getting lower, they're paying lower for fuel costs. Are you aware of that?
I'm sorry, Senator, I'm unaware.
Yeah, I believe there was some information where they were paying lower for fuel. Maybe that's something you can look into.
So our fuel, we have several fuel contracts. And so the fuel contracts that are attached to the LEAC are the fuel recovery charges for power generation. Other contracts, such as fleet, you know, fuel for the wheeled cars and smaller standby generators, those would be on other contracts. So I'm sorry, I'm not aware.
Okay, I'll look for that information, yeah, to help. And the other thing is the congressional bills, like the infrastructure bills and Inflation Jobs Bill. Is there any funding that GPA is planning to utilize to help mitigate the cost of power here?
Absolutely. You're referring to the IIJA and the IRA. So we are actively pursuing grants. There are a lot of clean energy grants, as well as physical security, cybersecurity, resiliency grants that are available. So we've submitted several grants. We're working with Tyrone Titano and his group also in coordination, so that we're all collaborating together, and we're not trying to compete against the same grant funding. So although we're competing and applying for those grants, those grants will not be immediately available. And then there are also the lead time that goes into starting the projects and finishing it. But yes, absolutely, lots of federal grant money.
Okay, thanks. And also in the committee report, there was a question about whether ARP funds can be used to subsidize costs of power. And CNMI provides the subsidy directly to the ratepayer. But in Guam's case, the subsidy is going to the power generator. So I guess maybe a question for the legal counsel. Have you seen anything that would substantiate that the use of ARP funds is a proper use to subsidize rates?
No, I haven't, Senator. And I think we had discussed that at the last bill hearing as well. And I think I defer to BBMR or DOA for that. I think they had done the analysis on that. But we haven't seen anything that would allow us to do that.
So unfortunately, okay, so Lester Carlson, I guess the question is to you is, the conditions on using the ARP funds. Has there been any efforts to see if the money could be used to subsidize rates? I know this has been done in other types of federal grants, such as the unemployment. There's been a lot of communication between Department of Labor to get, you know, more favorable guidance or support. And just wondering if there has been any communications with the federal government regarding ARP funds for ratepayers, ratepayers subsidies?
Thank you, Senator Perez. I believe the governor wrote a letter when we were contemplating the first round. And she had her legal team look at the eligibility of ARP funds for this. And they determined that this is not COVID-related. The other programs that you're talking about were employment assistance programs, assistance programs to kind of get people new job skills because of COVID. The cost of oil and COVID, it's like, there's no correlation. So she was very clear on that. And she wrote a letter a few months back.
All right, thank you. Thank you to the panel, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Moilen, do you have any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for GPA, possibly to help assist us in moving this bill forward, if you have any, the feedback that you receive from your customers regarding the prior assistance that we had with the similar plan, and now what we're trying to do today? If you can share some experience, maybe your customers have shared with us to help us understand.
It's a good question, Senator Moilen. And really, we just spoke with our customer service manager, James Borhodges, today. And the biggest question he's getting, our customers calling, asking, has the legislature passed the bill to allow December credits? They're asking that before they pay their power bill. The relief is something that they're really asking for. Some of the pay plans include dividing up into three, four different payment installments. So that really, ratepayers, again, this is just how I'm interpreting it. I think ratepayers are anticipating and hoping that they won't have to make that final payment, because the December credit will come through. I say that, and at the same time, I consider what Senator Brown and Senator Perez, you know, their concerns are about what happens when the money dries up. And this will be very difficult. However, we still do have several ratepayers that have received money under the ERA and the HAF. And so as those programs also dry up or they become ineligible because of the program rules, we're finding that we're giving more and more payment plans out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Rens, do you have any questions for the panel? None? Senator Torres?
Thank you. I was reading the committee report again. And what strikes me and sticks out again and just affirms what you've been saying, Mrs. Nemtjako, is also contained in Mr. Beneventi's testimony, where he ends it with, "This legislative body had the wisdom to create and fund the Programan Para Yezura Talta to provide immediate financial relief to the ratepayers. The need for financial assistance remains." And he urges the legislature on behalf of all GPA ratepayers to extend the program for as long as practicable. And I think, really, the two questions, really, to decide whether we're in support or not in support, is do we want to continue the Programan Para Yezura Talta, which is a relief fund, given the fact that the cost of fuel pre-COVID was about $50 a barrel, and now it's tripled that. It's about 150 is what just GPA's estimate is. So I think that in and of itself demonstrates how much of an impact it has had on the rate of electricity provision on Guam and also the charge to the consumers. But, so that's the first part, is determining is there a need. And in fact, GPA has expressed that, as you have, again, today and reinforced that, that ratepayers are still in dire need of financial relief. And the only way to provide financial relief is through this program, for example, where it's just a broad application equitable across all ratepayers on Guam. And the second part to considering whether to support this measure is really shored up and affirmed by BBMR, where they have represented that the funds in that, funds collected in excess of projected revenues are sufficient and can meet the impact of about $26.3 million towards this project. So I just wanted to just emphasize those two points, because it really comes down to those two things. Are we going to continue this relief program? Is there a true need for it? And you've demonstrated there is. The rates per barrel, per barrel costs are still triple what they were pre-COVID. And we have the money. So do we want to provide relief right now, where relief is mostly needed? Notwithstanding all considerations going forward, but just, you know, do you address a present need? And I think that is the fundamental question. And what many of us are reacting to right now is, where there is a need, there needs to be a solution. And this bill is calling for that solution or an extension to what is, has been the solution through the Programan Para Yezura Talta, the energy credit program. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for just reemphasizing that position from GPA, because I think it just comes down to that very basic. Are people crying for help? And if that's the case, you know, does this provide relief? And you've pretty much said yes. And I just, your emotion, I think, was captured today, because I think many of us, notwithstanding the fact that we've, we know that it's there to actually hear it from you through your customer service manager, kind of resonates about how bad it is out there. So I just want to thank you for that. I don't know if you had a comment to that?
No, I don't. But on behalf of all of our ratepayers, thank you. Ratepayers don't, they don't only consist of just residential customers. These also consist of commercial customers. So with our commercial customers, although $100 for a commercial customer may not be as much as they'd like, it does help. So these are mini-marts. And if that can help, you know, these are stores. These are businesses that provide services. Fuel is expensive overall, not just for GPA generators. So to fuel your cars, to fuel the delivery vans, to fuel the ships, every, costs are going up all over. So while this is $100 to all ratepayers, all qualified ratepayers, that, it matters.
And I think too, Tracy, what we don't understand is how delicate it is when you do lose power, when you can't afford to pay a bill and it gets disconnected. That gap between, even if you are able to find the money and make whole and get your power reconnected, the time that it takes often is, can result in either people with health issues not having the environment necessary for their maintenance, but also the loss of food and other subsidies. So I think those things kind of factor in when you're looking at true need and how to make things better where they're not so good to begin with, right?
Very good point.
Thank you, GPA. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel?
I just want to thank you for your testimony so far, and it's been very helpful. I think especially proving the need, the continued need. Can you just confirm what you said about commercial customers? So does the, what, the last five months, were there any customers that then were not included in the program? Or are you saying all your customers were included in the program?
No, ma'am, not all customers were included. For instance, government accounts were not included. I do not believe streetlight accounts were included. So we have two different types of streetlights, generally private and public. The public would be streetlights under DPW or a mayor account. Or any ratepayer could request a streetlight. So we, those accounts were not, did not avail of the credits.
All right, well, great. Then the money went farther than I thought it was going to go, so that's good. And the, so of course, we're concerned, right? We want to take care of the need that we also have seen, believe, and I'm glad you're confirming that today. However, yeah, I am concerned, like, what happens after this, right? So what, and I know that GPA has repeatedly assured us that after 2024, when the new power plant's online, our fuel prices are going to not control our rates that much. Or hopefully, we're going to get some relief, because we're using different fuel. And of course, you've talked about the solar farms. But is there any other, any other thing that GPA intends to do or can make some plans to do that can reduce costs? Because, yeah, I think we've come to a very serious mark here, where salaries have not risen that much for most of the population versus the cost of living.
Yeah, very good point, Speaker. I'm sorry, I did fail to mention earlier, when we were talking about additional solar farms, that we currently have a bid out for an additional 180 megawatts of renewable energy. So again, the technology is agnostic. It doesn't necessarily mean it'll be solar. We're open to any renewable energy technology that fits the requirements. Any, GPA has always looked at its costs. Sitting next to the CFO, he can tell you that that's the truth. We're always looking to reduce our costs, and even with our operating costs. So we've been tightening the belt so much that that is where we are getting the money to put forward to pay for the fuel shipments that are coming in. And also for, you know, for the fuel that we have purchased that haven't been recovered through the LEAC, right? That second part of your energy rate. So we'll continue to look at the So we'll continue to look at that, but really, our demand-side management, again, on, we're all, we're all here ratepayers. So demand-side management for the ratepayer account includes the rebate, the energy sense rebates that we have right now. So we're not, we're asking people to conserve electricity, but we're also asking folks to use their electricity most efficiently. So what we see is sometimes disparate groups, where we have ratepayers who are really struggling financially, we know that they can reduce the cost of their electricity by upgrading, for instance, their split AC unit. But the cost to come up to purchase, right, the split AC unit is very difficult for a lot of families who are barely making ends meet. What GPA can do is if the family is able to afford to purchase the unit, we have a rebate program. They come in and they apply, actually, they apply online now, and we mail checks out. And so that helps. Looking, so looking for other programs, we have asked GITA, and we're talking to GITA about possibly starting some sort of a loan program. So folks that really can demonstrate the financial need and have a hard time finding the money, they can find some short-term loans to purchase some energy-efficient appliances and other home envelope areas. We are also, will be unveiling, right now, we have some information on home audits, energy audits, that you can do yourself. And so hopefully, we'll be rolling out soon a audit program, so we can send energy auditors out to your homes or businesses, just to help you identify those areas. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you. And I, by the way, I want to commend you. I think the energy rebate program is run very efficiently. I've seen many people in my family apply and get their rebates very quickly, I myself too, when I switched out Aircon, was able to do that. So it seems to work very well. And, but I agree with you, that purchase price, I'm glad you're exploring with GITA another option. What about, and then you mentioned earlier that we still have the ERA and the HIF available, right? I'm going to ask you about that. And then you also mentioned about federal infrastructure funding, and that you're applying for grants through the Bureau with Tyrone Titan, but what will you use that for? Will that result in reduced rates? Is that a possibility?
Ultimately, ultimately, I believe so. So the IIJA and the IRA, GPA or GEO for the energy grants, some entity on Guam, if it's not GPA, or the Guam Energy Office, it will be another Guam agency. Those will go for, generally, the grants that have come out for IIJA and IRA are large infrastructure grants. So it would be for, for instance, large battery storage or large-scale renewable energy, the infrastructure for energy, such as upgrading transmission lines, substations. So that, those, that is critical infrastructure, and as we look to add more and more renewable energy, battery storage, and really transition the energy industry, you need that infrastructure first. We can't keep adding, for instance, more and more solar to the grid without having to upgrade the infrastructure. So at the very end, yes, it, as, if that infrastructure, these grants, these federal grants are used to beef up the infrastructure, and we're able to add cleaner, more affordable energy, then yes, it ultimately always benefits the ratepayer.
Okay, so we can look forward to that in the next year, perhaps?
That's a pretty aggressive timeline. So we're looking, we're probably looking to hear back for grant awards within the next year. It'll take some time.
So that office is, I said it wrong, it's the Office of Infrastructure Policy, the Tyrone Titan.
Thank you.
Office of Infrastructure Policy, okay. Can you just give the, listening, if there's anyone listening, about the ERA and the HIF?
HAF.
HAF. I'm not even familiar with that. What is that?
Well, the ERA is the Emergency Rental Assistance. And so those are, those are for residential renters.
And still available.
Excuse me.
Still available for landlords to apply, or?
Those are for, yes, I believe so. I'm going to have to defer to DOA, so DOA manages that. And then also the HAF, which is the Homeowners Assistance Fund. So one is for renters, one is for homeowners. I know that there are different program start and stop dates, and then also different criteria. And Speaker, if you don't mind, although the general manager is on leave, he's never very far away.
Oh, he's listening, yes.
In terms of relief, fuel prices to come down, the Ukadu Plant will reduce LIAC from about 31 cents to about 15 cents per kilowatt hour. And with today's fuel prices, we all need the support getting the Ukadu Power Plant completed. As far as the Kepco's savings, and I believe that was Senators Brown and Perez, the Kepco Solar saving, I'm sorry, the Kepco Solar Farm is saving $3 million per month right now. It will reduce our fuel imports by about 250 barrels per year. The new 150-megawatt renewable energy bid, the one I mentioned before, will triple that savings. And the Ukadu Power Plant will reduce oil imports by over 500,000 barrels per year. And he wants to let everyone know that relief is coming. Ukadu is under construction and must be our island's priority.
Right, yes, and I understand that. And yeah, my only concern then, I mean, among others, it's between now and 2024, because that's the projected date to complete that project, and it's very concerning for us day to day. And I know you're going, GPA will also suffer if the ratepayers are just unable to pay their bill and start just not paying, and it's a lose, lose, lose all around. So we want to try these efforts to keep them actively, you know, able to avail of power and still provide for their families, and, but yeah, we are looking for any cost savings in the interim, and any additional savings that they will be able to see. And yeah, thank you for all your other efforts, for making the other grants available, applying for the grants actively, and all of that. So hopefully, I don't know, Lester, are you able to answer about those programs, about the availability, just for those who are listening, the ERA and the HAF?
I'm just like, Mrs. Limtia Koo, I have no working knowledge of the programs.
So I know that we still have the one, kind of the one-stop center in the top of the Bank of Hawaii building, for those who can apply or want to apply to go there and see if it's, if they qualify and are eligible for that. But the beauty of this bill is that everybody should be eligible to receive the $100 credit for the next five months, but in the interim, if they can apply for these other programs, that will help them as well. They add on to each other, correct? And, and of course, your energy-saving rebates and your efforts as well. And if there's any others that GPA can make, please let us know, because I think, I think we want to confirm for you, and you can, you have confirmed for us, that the need is indeed very real. So, Cesar Massey.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Ada, we're going to mix up the round on this second round now, we completed the first round. Senator Ada, do you have any questions for the panel?
No questions again, Mr. Chair. Just like to thank the panel for being here, and to wish them and their family a very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to ask Mr. Carlson, the impact of this appropriation will have, while we do have additional money at this time, you know, where does this put us with other obligations, funds that have already been obligated? Because, you know, nice it's going to be Christmas this year, and maybe a little bit into next year, but, you know, the time's coming, it's inevitable, it's not going to be as high as what we're getting that we are able to do these type of appropriations. So if this is passed, odds of that are fairly good. Where does that put you with your additional, you know, what amount of cushion of any will you have with what's already been obligated for this, you know, this current fiscal year that we're in?
Being that this is from revenue from FY '22, it doesn't have any effect on the '22 closing. This will just be added in as an expense for '22, one that we can accommodate along with, you know, the gas tax extension. So I, it, it basically, if I could, like, paraphrase the comments made today, the need is real, the solution is here, it doesn't affect '23. I think we're in good shape for this round.
Do you know what's left after what the current obligations are, that appropriations that have already been made out of the 2022?
We provided that information again on the CRER, and we're at $47,526,000. You take this appropriation, add the $5 million for the gas tax, we're roughly at 31, 32. So there's still a $15 million cushion. And again, we did discuss, and I think Mr. Burns is on the record, somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 million to take care of, you know, a special funding shortfall. So we're, we're in a good position.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much, the panel as well, and certainly, if we can get the additional information, when GPA can have it available, any, with regards to your solar farm? Did you have that information, how much this is offsetting you annually, your, from your fuel, fuel costs previously that you had to pay prior to having that partnership and having those, having the solar plant operational?
Yes, so Senator Brown, GM Beneventi message, and currently, the Kepco Solar Farm in Manilau is saving $3 million per month in fuel. And we will, and will reduce fuel imports by about 250,000 barrels per year. The additional 180-megawatt renewable energy bid that has just out will triple those savings.
And what's the timeframe, if you're just putting the bid out, what's your timeframe for construction and estimated operation time?
Yeah, probably about two, maybe three years.
Two to three years.
Yeah, depending on the award, the time for award. Once we get the Ukadu, the Ukadu Power Plant commissioned, we will reduce oil imports by over 500,000 barrels per year. So that's what we're not buying. So if you multiply 500,000 by current fuel price, about $130, $150 a barrel, that's significant. Even if we multiply it by a more conservative number, like $100 per barrel, which was, which reflects generally what we were using before, that's significant savings in our LIAC.
Well, and good news at least is, we're not going to be at least subject to the amount of fluctuation of fuel prices that go on, so certainly, that would hopefully provide us some consistently, you know, consistency and stability with regards to at least those solar plants being in place. So thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks for coming, and certainly, happy holidays to all of you as well. Thank you.
Same to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Sheldon? None. Senator Perez, do you have any, there's no questions for the panel?
Yes, I do. Just one question regarding, so there was a meeting that was held regarding risk hedging investment strategy in regards to kind of stabilizing oil prices. Is that something, I guess, what are your thoughts on that? Or has GPA been involved in that in the past?
Yes, when it comes to hedging, we do hedge. There's two types of hedging, there's two types of hedging. There's a fiscal hedge, and there's a financial hedge. As for financial hedgings, are the ones you do buy futures, or swaps, or other derivatives. We don't do that. But we do, what we do is fiscal hedgings. What we do is we figure out what the future price is going to be, and we buy the fuels in ahead of time. So, or when we feel that the oil price is the lowest. So we do that kind of fiscal hedgings, but that has to do with how much supply of tanks we have. The other kind of few hedgings we have is like demand-side management, we provide rebates. So the peak of, the peak where we, the most expensive to burn a generator is reduced, or prevent peaks getting higher. So we do those kind of other fiscal hedgings.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Peter Thurla, do you have anything further for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to address this to GPA. Does the Programan Yezuda give credit to, you know, some of the government agencies like Parks and Reg, UOG, DOE? So it doesn't give credit to government agencies at all?
No, no, Senator, no government agencies, including government streetlights, are eligible under, for this program.
And the reason why I ask that, because, you know, some of these government agencies do open at night for sports and things like that. So is there anything in the making to allow the credit for some of these agencies that open up at night for sports and things like that?
I believe in the bill, in the original Programan bill, it does specify qualified residential and commercial accounts. And so if those agencies, if the ratepayers are government agencies, then, no, Senator, we cannot, per the law, extend that credit.
So it doesn't extend the credit to these agencies then?
No, no, it doesn't, but I'm going to defer that to this body.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Thurla. Senator Blas, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for the panel for being here, just sat here intently listening. I guess a question for GPA. Tracy, do you have, is GPA able to track what the average power bill cost was for residential and commercial for the last five years?
We can, we can certainly average that out, Senator. However, we have, we have different classes of residential and commercial customers, and we tend to put them in buckets based on consumption. So, you know, per kilowatt hour is what I mean.
And I just found, I think that'd be interesting to look at for the purposes of future planning. You know, I have to agree with some of the concerns of, you know, my colleagues. While we see this bill, you know, as temporary respite, you know, for what they're feeling now, just this bill alone is only for five months. You know, what happens in June, July, August, God forbid, September, you know, the hottest months of the year, when, you know, consumption, energy consumption is probably at its peak, you know, being that it hasn't snowed on Guam yet. And, and so, you know, it goes in line too with, we've had a number of, I guess, alternative energy sources, you know, and I appreciate that, you know, that Mr. Beneventi was able to share ultimately what it would mean with regard to our necessity to purchase more oil, But what I fear is that, and I'm trying to figure out, is, okay, if we got more alternative energy sources online, why do the prices still continue to rise? And I can recognize that, you know, over the last couple of years, we've seen a triple, you know, almost 300% increase in some cases for, for, you know, the price of, where are we getting our oil to be, by the way? Where are we getting our fuel?
I believe our oil comes out from Singapore.
We do have three vendors who provide oil for us. We have Hyundai, who we buy bulk fuels of, loads of a point two RFO. Then we also buy diesels from Mobil and Shell.
Okay. So basically, when we're looking at oil price indexes, which market do we look at to try to determine?
The pricing is done through Platts of Singapore.
Okay, okay. And what is the current price today in the price of oil? Again, a barrel of oil?
Yeah, currently, the barrel world, even last month, it was about close to $135 a barrel. Currently, it's Currently, it's about a hundred and five dollars a barrel.
Hundred and five?
Yes.
What is the U S oil price right now in comparison?
I don't have the data for that.
Okay, okay. Well, you know, because, you know, when you hear a lot with regard to, you know, the price of oil, there seems to be some confusion as to where we're getting our oil from. And so I just wanted to make it clear as to where where our oil is from, because, you know, people are saying, well, the price of oil has gone down to, I think in the United States right now, it's close to about seventy dollars a barrel. Okay? And, you know, you says, look, guys, I don't think we're getting it from the United States, getting it from the other side of the world. But, you know, again, as as we put in a lot of these, I guess, alternative energy sources, putting them online, okay? And I appreciate, and hopefully, that that could help to reduce it, because I'm, again, I'm concerned past what's going to happen past me. I support this bill, you know? The conversation as to where the where the money is going to come from is obviously another conversation. However, if my brother Lester Carlson over there is confident that we can sustain this based on excess revenue, excess revenue, then I'll go with it, okay? Because our people need it. And quite honestly, if, you know, the government, government got access, give it back. And in the case of giving it back in the in in the form of of, you know, assistance with 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 power bill, great. Appreciate it. I appreciate it. Okay? But me, like 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 a lot of other people, I mean, we appreciated that we got, you know, a hundred dollars off over the last five months, but then, you know, we got a hundred dollar increase in 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 other costs and it still, my power bill still looked the same.
Senator, if I may, before we, when we were talking about the sixty megawatt Mingilau Solar Farm, and we discussed the projected savings for that, and we know now that the savings is three million dollars, that three million dollars is actual savings. So but for the rising costs of oil, the ratepayers would have realized the savings in their fuel recovery charge.
I understand. And that's why, again, you know, I mean, in the conversations that are having with a lot of people, you know, part of that conversation is, again, is confusion as to where we're getting our oil from. Okay? Okay? If if the price of oil is, you know, one thing in the U S, but we're not getting it from the U S, we're getting it from other sources, you know, that helps to explain why there isn't that significant decrease in this. But along the same lines is then, as more power sources come online that don't rely on this, I am hoping that, you know, that, you know, in the very near future, we can start to recognize and realize that, you know, that it's it it costs lower. Appreciate, you know, the the energy rebate programs that that you have. I appreciate the the education processes that you have. And I appreciate you being here because my, it's blinking red over there, which means time's up. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Trelawney, do you have anything, ma'am, for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, there is no doubt, even I am being approached by individuals thanking this let this body for putting out the first bill and then and the anticipation of the second bill is really needed for them. They're they're just can't be thankful enough. I mean, it's Christmas time, and what better time than to to give a gift such as this for our our people? I do have a question, though, with regards to the cost that that you charge our ratepayers. Is that solely tied into the cost of gas or is that tied in with the operating cost of G P A?
No, no, Senator, Trelawney, it's not. So our base rate is one component of your total energy bill. The second component is your fuel recovery charge. So when you, when any ratepayer looks at their bill, the fuel recovery charge is clearly marked, and it's marked fuel recovery charge. And it's the total kilowatt hours you've consumed multiplied by what we refer to as a LiAC, which is set by the P U C. All the other charges above that is considered base rate. And so that rate has not changed for, I believe, since twenty thirteen?
Yeah.
Twenty thirteen.
And what is the base rate?
And that base rate pays for all operations of G P A except for fuel. So it pays for personnel, it pays for our bucket trucks, it pays for the everything.
Is it anticipated that G P A is going to be raising that amount? I mean, you said the last time it was raised was two thousand thirteen?
Yes, that is correct. The last time it was raised was two thousand, about two thousand thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, Senator. And so at this point, G P A has no intention of asking for a base rate increase?
Not at all, because that that's base rate is based on operations. Someone brought to my concern about salary increases that were done at G P A. Actually, it was just recently given the salary increase, and then a year later, another one for, you know, so people are wondering if these salary increases over at G P A has to do with also the rising cost of other power bills, so.
No, it does not.
But technically, if you if you just mentioned that, you know, the base rate does, it is operating cost.
The base rate is operating cost.
Right. And and the consumers are charged a base rate, correct?
The, yes, that is a portion of it. But your your energy bill is not rising to pay for salary increases.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying that, yeah.
Your energy bill is rising because the fuel costs are rising.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's good to hear that G P A does not plan on increasing the base rate at all, right? That's what you said earlier. I mean, who is that that was speaking? I'm sorry, I'm blocked. I can't really see from my.
Senator, it was just that, based on what Jim Benaventi has said before, G P A has no intention of raising the base rate at this time.
Even after since how many years, since two thousand thirteen?
At this time, we have no intention of raising the base rate.
Okay, that's that's really good to hear. So we'll take that to heart. Well, I greatly appreciate your time and and your effort here, and I wish everyone on the panel a very Merry Christmas and a Blessed New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Senator Brown, I mean, correction, Senator Moylan. Oh, it changed his name now from the delegate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the panel. I appreciate what what this bill is trying to do. You expressed loud and clear that the good things this will do for our customers with G P A. Hoping this bill moves forward and passes into law as soon as possible. And I think our concerns about future and how we can help the prices come down and where this money will come from, maybe in the Thirty Seventh Guam Legislature, we can look at reducing our B B T from by one percent with the help of Lester Carlson here and pass that cost savings on to our customers. So thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Duane, do you have any questions for the panel? None? Senator Torres, anything? Madam Speaker, out there at the bill, any questions?
No questions, just thank you to the panel. It's just mostly.
All right, because we've completed the two rounds, I'll now excuse the panel so we can go into the third round. And thank you, panel. Don't don't go far, okay? Because we still have another, I mean, excuse to go outside, but we'll call you back in for the next bill, all right? Especially the two on the side here on the left. Thank you very much. We will now stand in recess at this time.
The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. We are now in the third round for Bill Number Three Five Seven Dash Thirty Six. There is one amendment loaded to the drive. Speaker Trelawney, would you like to do it at closing or now?
So third round, well.
This is the third round.
The third round, yes. So again, so on the bill, again, you know, the funding source is twenty twenty two excess revenues. It's available to us. We're very fortunate that we are able to find a funding source and provide this relief. It's, I think, in large part due to the very conservative budgeting by the legislature since twenty nineteen. We've seen excess revenues every year, every year since twenty nineteen, and tried in different ways to use that, some successfully, some not. But this one, we have been successful in our budget bill and prior bills to appropriate this excess revenue. So I'm I'm very grateful that we do have these monies available. In F Y twenty nineteen, the excess revenues recognized by the O P A audit were thirty five point six million. In twenty twenty, it was forty six point three million. And F Y twenty twenty one, sixty two million unaudited in the C R E R and thirty point four million in the audited findings. F Y twenty two, as we've found in the C R E R, recognized a hundred and three million. We've used part of that in different appropriations and in the budget bill itself, and we will continue to use that in this bill. And and there are still sufficient funds from F Y twenty two excess. And again, I just want to thank my colleagues for, and O F P Chair, and and for our continued work to to be conservative in budgets, but to still prioritize the set aside of money for tax refunds sufficient to make prompt payment for the LiAC and other assistance to businesses. I'm sorry, not the LiAC, the LEAP, too much LiAC talk here. The LEAP program where we gave assistance directly to businesses. And the rise payments that we were able to make, and the gas tax relief that we talked about earlier, and continuing gas tax relief and in the past gas tax relief that we were able to accommodate. And I know that with this bill, still, it's a hundred dollar credit for every residential, master metered, and commercial customer for the next five months, one hundred dollars each month. And it may not be enough for everyone's concerns or their abilities. And for those families who are continuing to struggle, I just want to encourage them not to lose hope, to continue to consult with G P A regarding payment plans, regarding home audits on the power consumption in your homes, and G P A's energy rebates for the purchase of more energy efficient appliances. And to contact the Guam Relief Center. If you might be eligible as a renter or a homeowner for the programs that are being conducted by the government of Guam, the Guam Relief Center is located on the third floor of the Bank of Hawaii building in Higatna. They should be able to answer your questions as to whether you are eligible. It's open from eight to five P M, Monday to Friday, except for Gov Guam holidays. The number is four seven five twenty sixty, two zero six zero. That's the Guam Relief Center. So, you know, so again, I thank my colleagues for their consideration of these efforts to provide additional relief. I thank the chairperson for his holding the hearing on this bill promptly and for reporting it out for this session. I'd like to make a motion to add him as a cosponsor. I think that was passed out. Madam Chair?
Yes, on the motion, can be found in your Google Drive, and it's been passed out, colleagues, to amend the bill to add Senator Joe S. Augustine as a cosponsor. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Again, I want to recognize that this is the one thing that we can help to to subsidize and that, you know, we we can't continue to forever subsidize the rising cost of fuel. And so I I I do believe G P A is sincere in their efforts to convert to other renewable energy sources and to get that Ukudu Power Plant online that will take us off of some of these fuel costs. And so twenty twenty four, in for that sense, cannot come soon enough. But for those. But for those in the interim, I hope this does provide some relief. And I thank my colleagues for their support. She does, Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Speaker. On the bill, any comments on the bill? Hearing none. Senator S. Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to comment that, like to thank the author of the bill. You know, the people of Guam has been asking for additional relief. This bill provides that, and also the following bill. But I'll comment on that one when we get to that point. But at this point, I'd like to thank the author for the bill. It does provide, it identifies the appropriation. And I hope my colleagues will support this bill so we can move forward to continue to help our people of Guam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator S. Augustine. Oh, Senator Blasier recognized. Do you have a comment on the bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thank you very much to the author and to thank you to my colleagues for the conversations that we had in Committee of the Whole. This is obviously something that our people need. And I, you know, one thing that struck me about this whole thing is our people are still in need. You know, our economy is nowhere near where it was pre-pandemic. Nowhere near it is being claimed to be by this administration. Our people are suffering. And I think that this exercise, what we just went through and what we're going to be able to provide, should be sent a clear message to the administration and to the powers that be. Our people still need help. Our businesses need help. Our families still need the help. And while there can be some discussion or there may be as far as a disagreement as to whether or not this funding source can be used over that funding source, there still remains a funding source that can be utilized more effectively and more efficiently for our people. You know, and you know, Madam Chair, you're humble in as far as sitting there, but I remember you were one of the first people that helped to move, to push GPA to move towards more, you know, energy producing processes. But, you know, like the Speaker said, this is, you know, we can't, we're probably not going to be able to realize the savings and the benefits of a lot of those things till 2024. We have a whole year ahead of us and people are still suffering. And so I hope that, from what we've heard here, even from GPA themselves, when they say they're still, you know, despite the energy savings programs that they have and the rebates, there are still people that are suffering, more so than there were three years ago. So how we can say that the economy has improved and that we can no longer, we no longer need to be able to help others beyond me? I'm going to support this bill. And I want to thank the author and the co-authors. I know there was, I know there was a competing bill. I'm just glad that we were able to compromise and get together, and I applaud this. But the message is still very clear. Our people need the help. Okay, and while we try to figure out how we can do this with what little money we can have as a result of excess, there's still a whole account that's available. And I ask and I implore, I beg, that the administration finds ways to be able to provide our community, the people that need it most, the businesses that need it most, the assistance to get them back on their feet. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Blas. On the bill, final comment? Do you like to close? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for the discussion on this bill and your consideration. And I'd like to make a motion that this, that the Committee of the Whole recommend that the bill be placed on the third reading to do pass.
On the motion for the Committee of the Whole to place on the third reading voting file the recommendation to pass, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll now move to Bill Number 359-36. Senator S. Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have read the letter while we'll be submitting it to the Speaker to officially withdraw Bill 359. Bill 357 fulfills the requirement. And as we work together, our offices with the author of Bill 357, we've met the requirement to assist the people of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator S. Augustine. Colleagues, we'll now move to Bill Number 332-36 LS as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriations, and Housing. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill is introduced by myself as well as a co-sponsor with Senator Chris Duane, Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Tony Adap. It's an act to add a new Article 13 to Chapter 77 of Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Authorizing Tax Credits for the Rehabilitation and Improvements of the Football Fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation. Madam Chair, Bill 332-36 is a measure that mirrors the efforts of the Guam Legislature that has endeavored over the years to repair and rehabilitate several public facilities, from soccer fields to baseball courts, basketball courts, and even in repairs to roads at the Harmon Industrial Park. This body just entertained a similar legislation to improve tennis courts under the preview of the Tennis Federation, one which I certainly support. The public-private partnership process is the simplest way to achieve the objective which benefits the public while utilizing the most minimal of financial resources of the government because it spreads tax credits over a five-year period. Before getting to the process, let's just talk first about the Guam National Football Federation. This is a league which comprises of nearly 1,000 players. These are young boys and girls from as young as six or seven to teenage years. It comprises of dedicated coaches who volunteer and participate not only for the love of the sport, but to help develop kids. It involves families who congregate at games to support their kids, their nephews, nieces, and much more. Football is just not about athletics. It encompasses discipline, camaraderie, friendship, and of course, creates character. Kids get competitive, which is a trait they can use in many aspects of their lives. The late coach, Hows Saroma, many of us may know him personally, and his sons, that are good friends of many of us, have taken kids who had disciplinary issues and who were heading towards a residence maybe at DYE or possibly even DOC, but brought them out on the fields and allowed them to divert their anger and their issues in the game of football. Their sport and their league have helped course of many kids into the right direction. So today, many of these fields are in bad need of repair. They have issues with bleachers, inadequate lighting and security, and many other factors that we all know well too much of. Of course, these teams attempted to fundraise. A lot of us bought tickets for different fundraising events. But it's never adequate. They obtained sponsors, of course, for uniforms and equipment, but there are, again, limitations. These are just the realities that we need to help. We need to give them our help to improve these fields so that they can resonate back to increase the number of boys and girls who play these sports and to make it safe for them. Because that will go a long way in many aspects of improving our community. But honestly, the government funding options, we know, are limited, and we don't have tens of millions of lying around to improve the fields the Federation utilizes. So this bill is introduced to help these teams, their coaches, and most importantly, their players. This measure will authorize the teams to see private contributions to improve their facilities in the same manner we are authorizing a process for the Tennis Federation or have in the past with improvements with other public facilities. This measure will ensure that no more than $1 million in tax credits will be issued each year for five years. This is the cap, and will only happen if all the teams secure private contributions. This is an investment into our community and an investment into nearly 1,000 boys and girls and their families, not to mention the investment into the growing Federation and the sport over the years. So I encourage my colleagues to support this measure. And this legislation is essentially like an interest-free loan with payment spread over five years. We are using a proven public-private partnership structure. So let's do this for the kids, and thank you very much, and happy holidays. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moylan, Senator S. Augustine.
Madam Chair, there is a panel. We have OFP here and we have BBMR. Ms. Mel Menjola is on her way. She just got out of a meeting. She asked that she be here within 15 to 20 minutes. If we can recess for her to get here, and then we can begin. For the football folks, we have not been fortunate. I understand that Mr. Sharoma may be under the weather. I'm not too sure. We're still trying to get ahold of him. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will recess until the panel is complete. We will recess until the panel is complete.
Committee of the Whole has called back to order as requested by a few of our colleagues, that we will go ahead and recess until tomorrow at 9 o'clock so that we can get the panel here. Thank you. We'll recess till tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock.